At this time, I'll call our special meeting to order. If you will, all please rise. I'll ask Commissioner Legg if he'll lead us in our invocation, and it'll be followed by our Pledge of Allegiance.
Father, we thank you for this wonderful day. We thank you for the opportunity to meet here this evening among friends. West Lord, that you be with each and every one here, that you take them home safely, that you bless and watch over each member of this board, that we make the right decisions. We ask you to watch over our first responders, keep them safe. We also would like to ask that you watch over our military around the world. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. At this time, do I have a motion to approve our agenda?
So move.
Have a motion. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed, today, we're going to have a discussion of the golf course master plan, and I guess at this time, I'll turn it over to Ms. Cotter.
Good evening. Yes, that would be great.
Thank you.
Based on a number of comments received at the last presentation, we have gone back to the drawing board and developed a few additional concepts for both the municipal park and the golf park properties. The focus of today's meeting is specifically to talk about the alternatives that we're going to present today, and hopefully get a recommendation from the commissioners as to either proceeding with the staff recommended concept, or presenting all of the options for additional input from the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, and also at the upcoming public input meeting. So I would like to walk you quickly through each concept, and you all have a copy of all four concepts here in front of you. Drew's going to pull them up on the projector, and we also have copies of these boards if you need a larger copy.
Move your day first.
Yes, we can always move those around.
Good.
All right, so golf course property, Concept A. You've seen this concept at the last meeting. The changes that we've included is a larger rec facility, and that rec facility is about 57,000 square feet, and we're hoping to accommodate within that footprint both indoor aquatics, so an indoor pool, and recreation facilities such as basketball courts and some other multi-use and multipurpose classrooms. Outside of that is a all-inclusive playground, or just another playground, and then this does build upon the wagon wheel with the four baseball fields, and the event lawn with the centralized concessions, restrooms, and bandstand, and another play area. We like to have a nice core in the center of the wagon wheel primarily because we're trying to provide a park within a park. There's many non-baseball watchers or players that like to come to these community events, so we want to make sure that they are comfortable and have something to do, they're close to their parents, and there's something for everyone. And then we've also relocated the sensory garden to the western side of the property where we are proposing the sensory walk. So we're moving most of the passive recreation elements to the west side of the property where we do need a little bit more, we're focusing on respite, rehabilitation, and healing. So those are the primary updates to the golf course, Concept A. And then, if we take a look at golf course, the municipal park, Concept A. This has not changed from the last meeting. So the important things here are the splash pad, all-inclusive playground, and band shell stage, kind of an amphitheater space that would be installed in the short term to meet some of the immediate community needs. Any questions on Concept A for either site?
Anyone have any comments at this time? Anyone? Okay.
All right, so moving on to Concept B for the golf course. So in this concept, instead of providing the wagon wheel of baseball fields, we are providing a athletic facility that includes, it's labeled as soccer, but these are really multi-use fields, so we could also play things like rugby, lacrosse, soccer. We've also relocated the tennis courts to this facility, and the concession and restrooms are kind of at the southeast end of the two multi-use fields, right by the tennis, yep. And so that would act as your concessions restroom and bandstand amphitheater, so all of your community events would get relocated to the golf course park, and then the soccer fields would be used as your large open event space. Something to keep in mind, if these are tournament level fields, is there would be lights on these facilities as well, whether it's a baseball or a multi-use slash soccer athletic complex. We did here also increase the building to the 57,000 square feet, hoping to accommodate both some indoor basketballs, courts, and aquatics, and we've got the splash pad attached to the recreation center, kind of an extension of the aquatics, and we're locating the all-inclusive playground at this site rather than the municipal park. And then, I think the last other little tweak was that the sensory garden again is moved to the western side of the property.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
You hit a home run, Rachel.
Well, great, thank you.
The basketball courts are moved there as well.
Yeah, so we're recommending that, I think in one of the golf course concepts, the A, I'm sorry, in the A of the municipal park, that the basketball courts are relocated, so it's a dedicated basketball court, and then the remainder of the concepts, we're combining basketball with parking because there will be few times that you'll actually have all of these spaces programmed and need all of this parking, so it gives the parking a secondary function outside of when it's maximized its use.
Okay, so the tennis courts are being moved, the basketball courts are being moved. Still have splash pads, still have the rec center in, and it looks like the passive part is still in the western part of the plan.
Yes, sir.
Solid.
We can go through the municipal park B, and then I'll answer any additional questions or comments on that one. So municipal park B, we are locating the four, or the kind of three-quarters of a wagon wheel, but we were able to squeeze the four fields on this site. We are going to talk about all of the cost implications, pros and cons of all these things, and the criteria that the master plan lists momentarily, so I don't want to dig too much into that. There are a couple challenges, one being grading and fitting everything. We were just able to fit it, so if there is grading in between the edges of the fields and any of the property lines or other facilities, there's a potential for retaining walls. We do need to expand and renovate the stormwater management facilities. We are able to keep a central core there with a shelter concessions and band shell. With a playground, although not an all-inclusive playground, your parking needs to be within 150 feet for it to be considered ADA accessible for an all-inclusive playground, and we couldn't get any parking into the core because of the extents that the ball fields occupy. Parking is fairly tight on this site, and the main experience here would be baseball and baseball tournaments, relocating all of the other facilities currently at municipal park to, including your community events, to the golf course park. So any questions about this?
Rachel, the, oh, excuse me, Madam Mayor.
Uh huh.
Questions for Rachel.
Okay.
Baseball fields are 300?
The three big ones are.
Okay. The walking track, is it still there, or is it gone?
Some of it is there. We do need to reconfigure and relocate about 80% of it.
You say 80%?
That's okay, because I noticed that you didn't, I didn't see that on here.
So the green.
The dotted lines.
Green dots.
The green dots are kind of the, but that, those are mostly proposed.
Yeah.
And a lot of the wooded vegetation would also get removed to accommodate enough parking for this facility.
Okay, so here's parking. Where's the parking?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
My only concern with the ball fields back here, it kind of splits the difference in what we really want. We want any facilities, but we're also wanting to be able to collect fees for tournaments, not for the regular season, but for tournaments. We can't do that back here. There's not enough parking, number one, and number two, the walking trails walk right by the ball fields. So how are we going to collect fees for a tournament?
You would have to have some sort of entrance gate that's staffed.
With my understanding, we can't block those gates off and charge people to come in there because it's a park.
Well, to ju, I mean, you'd probably keep them open and have access during non-tournament times, and then there would be someone manning an entrance gate during tournament times.
Kind of hurting on parking.
Parking will be challenging at this site, having enough parking, especially for tournaments when all the fields are in use at once.
That's all happening right now, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
We'll probably have to use overflow over at Rockfish Elementary School or something for the big tournament. Get that okay with the school board.
But that's not putting a parking lot within 150 feet of the, of the facility.
Do we lose any parking with this plan out here?
We do. So the next set of slides is kind of a matrix that shows what we felt were pros and cons, and I'd invite you, we've got some other, it's back in the PowerPoint.
Oh.
Yeah. It's the next, very next slide. All right, so we, and please note at the very bottom here, there are other categories. So it's very important to us that if there are additional criteria you feel are important to either of these plans, that they are captured as part of this. This was our first stab at this exercise. We listed the criteria from the comprehensive plan recommendations that we wanted to achieve by implementing either the municipal park and golf course concepts A, and the municipal park and golf course concept B. So the first is.
You know what, I think I, oops.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
I might have to do it this way so I can take notes, but you guys can't see that.
Did you bring copies of these slides, Rachel?
I did. I just want you to watch me making notes, and I don't think I can do that and play this at the same time. But I will take hand notes then, and then play the slideshow, so. Number of parking spaces, and I have these on another spreadsheet. They're in a different. We end up with 274 additional parking spaces on municipal park A. Golf course A is 601, and golf course B is 596. So those are about comparable, but we only end up with 47 new parking spots for municipal park, Concept B. So we get about 230 more spots with Concept A, which is very much a consideration for The second criteria is expanded event space for concerts, outdoor music, and special events, and we see that is achieved by municipal park golf course A and golf course B. There's limited event space on municipal park, Concept B. Primary, the primary use here becomes baseball and baseball tournaments. So this becomes a very specialty use park versus a community type park. The third, expanded nature trails, so we get that at municipal park A, golf course A, golf course B. Municipal park B, we can have the same trail, although we would have to reconstruct it, but we are taking out a significant number of trees, so nature trails was the specific recommendation from the comprehensive plan. That's why we didn't check the box there. The dedicated multi-use athletic fields, we achieve at municipal park A and the golf course park, B. Splash pad, we achieve at municipal park A and golf course B. All-inclusive facilities, we achieve at the municipal park A and golf course A and golf course B. Tournament fields, and this is primarily baseball, are accomplished at golf course A and municipal park B. Another thing the COP plan recommends is this concept of independence from the school system. So right now, the department has an excellent relationship with the school system. They're not imagining anything happen to the relationship, but at any time, the school system could say that they're limiting the use of fields for the recreation department. So therefore, we're recommending that we increase the number of fields owned and operated by the town, so there's less dependence and less threat to the current number of facilities that the town has. That was a recommendation of the comprehensive master plan. It does not change from municipal park A. We gain two multi-use fields in municipal park A, golf course park A. We gain two baseball fields. Municipal park B, we lose two baseball fields, and then golf course B, we gain four multi-use fields. So that's something to consider, the total number of fields that the town owns and operates. The public works expansion is most easily accommodated in municipal park A. Again, this is, this is space. The municipal park A has 98 acres, and the other site is about, is close to 200, so there's about 28, sorry. Municipal park is 28, and the golf course is about 91. So we simply have a lot more room on the golf course park to do more things. Aquatics, both golf course parks achieve this, and then I want to ask you all if there are other criteria that you've heard from the community or the COP plan recommendations that you would like me to add that any of these concepts achieve.
Any discussion, any questions, anything you want to add?
I think she's got it. I think it meets the, the community survey. It's just a question of what direction that the board wants to go in. But I think they're all there. It's just, they're just spread out between two different plans.
Madam Mayor, I'm.
Yes, sir.
I'm in favor of the golf course area for the addition of the ball fields, and maybe splash pad, because we can control what goes in there with the gates and fences. It's going to cause more traffic in the area, but when that road gets in there, it's going to be more traffic anyway, so it's not going to really affect that that much. It'll have its own entrance with a red light system. And my understanding is the roundabout will have a red light in it too, is that correct?
Roundabout will be free-flowing.
Yeah.
Okay. Somebody told me they saw a red light in the roundabout, so.
It's free-flowing.
I think you've done a good job. I'm really, myself personally, I'm more in favor of the ball field being on a bigger area for more parking, so this back here doesn't have to be closed off. But we're going to hear from people if we try to close it off and charge for a baseball tournament. We're going to hear from people.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Rachel, thank you for coming tonight instead of Saturday.
Absolutely.
I said earlier that you hit a home run, and I'm going to show you where you hit it. On golf course B, there is going to be four multi-use fields, and that is probably one of the biggest suggestions and recommendations that's coming from the community, is multipurpose fields, or common areas, as some municipalities like call them. Four of them compared to two, and we have growing sports programs in our community that's just not tailored to just one, but many, and multipurpose fields can definitely fix the many and entertain the many. So that's, that's the strength that I like, and that's why I said you hit a home run with it.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Mayor.
My only comment is I'm not a big fan of the outdoor basketball courts. If we're going to have indoor basketball courts for control issues, we've had some disciplinary problems, and it being right beside all-inclusive playground could be problematic for our staff. As far as I'm concerned, we can strike the outdoor basketball courts. If we're going to have indoor basketball courts available, that can be better supervised, and just leave that dedicated parking. That's my own personal opinion from what I've been able to observe the last 15 years. Other than that, I like the Concept B for keeping things kind of organized, and I, for one, just didn't want to see the golf course too busy with tournament ball and that type of thing, and I'd rather it be dedicated over here. I do think we can use the Rockfish Elementary for overflow parking, which we do, we use it anyways for Broward Park, and there should be some way that we can have a gate, a gated system of some sort for ticketing.
I have a few pros and cons and the costs to go through before we really give any final direction, but I want to make sure there aren't any other additions to the criteria that you all would like us to consider.
Okay, Madam Mayor, it's my understanding, if the ball field complex goes here, we lose two fields?
You do. You lose overall two baseball fields, yes.
Baseball, softball.
Baseball, softball, correct. So, yep, yep.
You lose part of the walking trail.
And depend, I mean, we probably also need to talk about phasing of all the improvements once we share the costs. If we're going to be relocating all of the amenities here at the municipal park, we need to think about when these improvements are going to be taking place, how you shut down ball fields for a season, and how quickly you can mobilize and meet some of the immediate community needs at the golf course park. But before we get to costs, if we're ready to move on, I want to share our pros and cons list, and again, I invite you all to add to it.
And Rachel, the staff, staff has gone through this Concept B over here at the, at our municipal park?
Yes, they've, they've seen it, mm-hmm.
I'm sorry, did you hear that question?
I was making sure staff had, was okay with Concept B over here at the municipal park.
They've reviewed it, yes.
They stand by Concept A.
Yeah, they, they prefer Concept A from a staff perspective and needs and demands of the baseball program and the baseball legacy, and if you need more information on registration, participation rates, or wait lists, Maxi pulled that data together too, so he can share with you what some of the current demand for baseball is. All right, so comparing municipal park A and B, and again, please add pros to either of these so we capture everything. For municipal park A, this, this speaks to that sequencing we talked about, and keeping fields in play while construction of new fields happens at golf course park. You can complete the full public works expansion. The splash pad can be constructed immediately as soon as funds are secured, and that was one of the high needs by the community on the survey. Both that and the inclusive play could both be constructed sooner than later. Most of the walking trail stays intact, so this is probably a matter of opinion, but from my perspective, having a central park in close proximity to your community or your civic spaces, it provides a true community park that are meeting diverse needs of lots of different people, and the municipal park B concept provides you with that one focused use. So this would promote, so in contrast, the other kind of side of that coin, which would be a pro for the municipal park, is it promotes family evenings out at the ball field. So one thing to consider is, what do you want your municipal park to be? Do you want it to be a true community park, or do you want it to be a very specialized park for a certain kind of event? That's a question. I spun it so you could have a pro for either park in that way. For park A, there's opportunity to renovate the skate park. The athletic lights are already in place, so there's some significant cost savings from municipal park A and transitioning the fields from baseball to soccer, because you don't have to reconnect all your utilities, your panels, and either relocate or replace all of your athletic field lights. And if you're going to run tournaments, you have to have lit fields.
So is the skate park gone?
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask. Where'd you go?
Um, there's opportunity to renovate it, so we're keeping it in municipal park A, but it. But it, we are getting rid of it altogether in municipal park B and we did not relocate it to the golf course. That's something we could consider.
Ah, that's why it's not there, okay.
Yeah.
Ah, so it's off?
Yeah.
Okay.
Nope, it stays for A.
There's no room for it on B?
No.
There's no room for it on B, but you didn't propose to move it to the golf course?
If it's, if it's something that is, that we get, that you guys get a lot of use for, we can find a spot for it, but it's not currently there. I mean, if that's something you'd like to see, I'm happy to add it.
Well, the reason I'm saying that is because the mayor pro temp suggested earlier to, to eliminate the outdoor basketball courts, I think. Is that right, Mike?
Right.
Mhm.
So that would be a space there. Or it would be, or if we kept it, if we kept the basketball courts, you'd still have room to include it there.
Yeah, the basketball courts are actually located in the parking lot. So it's a, it's a joint use, but you, you cannot play basketball and still park. But if we, we can't use that same space for a, um, for a skate park because it has physical structures. And so we'd be taking out parking and replacing it with a skate park.
Okay.
So we'd have to find another spot.
Another location, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Question, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
It's my understanding, Melissa, that we can't do anything with the basketball court because of the funds that it was built with?
I think that's what we determined, um, last time.
We talked about that today.
We talked, yeah, we were talking about that today.
I think tennis courts as, as well as the basketball courts.
I thought that timeframe had already expired.
I don't know, I've, I've just gone by.
We were going to, we were going to try to look into it.
We have to find out before we do anything. But the other thing that comes into play is the, um, the retention ponds in municipal park and that parking lot between ball field and public works is the same type of situation for the funds that we built that with and those retention ponds. Uh, the loan is set up, they're not having any interest for twenty years. And if we alter that, I don't think Rachel knows about this. If we alter that, something has to come up with that as well. And this plan eliminates that entire parking lot. It changes the, um, retention pond and eliminates the outdoor basketball court. It pretty much takes everything out of this for, except for the four ball fields.
I know it. Mr. Mitchell may be right, those time limits may have expired. But at one time, we wanted to close the basketball court because we had so much illegal activity going on out there, I will call it, and we couldn't do it. We wasn't allowed to do it because of the timeframe on the way they were funded.
It's also been our experience that when you take amenities away, there's a greater community outcry than when you work on strategies to address the crime. In the last presentation, we talked about a concept called SEPTED, which is Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design. And we also talked about a fee structure and some, um, programming ideas for helping to address undesirable activity there. I think too, if it's going to be located kind of a joint use with the parking lot next to a community center, you've got a lot of what we call eyes on the street. Um, it's maintained, people are circling through there frequently. That, um, those are all things that we would typically say encourage the facilities to be used for their intended purpose. And so I just invite you to consider, rather than taking amenities away from the public, to try to find strategies for improving safety across the parks in general. Because I think that's kind of a blanket comment, basketball. And there were some other parks themselves that could use improving to discourage crime in general.
Now, Rachel, you're working on the updating the comprehensive plan for the city of Fayetteville, correct?
Yes, sir.
And do they have any outdoor basketball courts?
Um, I believe they do. Safety and crime across the board is a concern that has come up. So we're also recommending some similar strategies or will be. Um, we're not quite to the recommendation part, but, um...
They currently have outdoor basketball courts?
I think they do. We didn't do, because they have so many parks, yeah, we haven't done.
Yeah, they've got quite, they've got more than one area of outdoor basketball courts.
Just about every park does. Yeah. Mayor, I didn't bring that up to, to try to eliminate the basketball courts. I just wanted to make sure you were addressing him, the basketball courts, and you knew, which obviously you do, knew about the funds that they were built with.
Yes, so, um, that was still a question last time I was here and I'm not sure we had a completely clear answer. But if that is the case, if those are set in stone. Now, I think with LWCF, I believe you can do, um, it has a formal name, but you're basically transferring one outdoor use to another. You just can't build any structures or transform the use from recreation to commercial, for example. I believe, but, um, that is something we would want to talk to your LWCF representative. It's Nate, um, have worked on a number of projects with him, so we could get that answer. So the last pro for municipal park A is that, uh, that first concept provides diverse amenities to meet many community needs. And then our pros for municipal park B, the tournament ball fields will be centralized in town, which could promote a family evening out at the ballpark. And then, um, it meets that public perception that fields, the number of fields across town are adequate. Kind of, uh, asking, giving this one an asterisk a little bit. We've got some other data and I can share the results that show baseball is still very much a part of your community fabric. And I think Maxie can share what the registration is and the participation rates going back up and seeing that trend. So, um, while that's the perception, I don't know that it's a good recommendation to take baseball fields away, especially if they're fields that are in the control of the town versus the school system.
Take what away?
Baseball fields away. The, the number of town-owned and operated baseball fields.
So you're telling us our baseball numbers are up?
Isn't that what you're?
They're up a little bit from last year.
From last year? How about on the five-year trend?
Up, down, up, down.
Yeah, cyclic.
Yeah, and...
Yeah, cyclic.
And part of your participation, we talk a lot in the comprehensive plan about, um, being a service provider and with aging facilities, there is demand in this area. We've, um, for one, I know Fayetteville is thinking about constructing about twelve more baseball fields for tournament-type facilities. Uh, the other thing is when we looked at the market potential index, and this was in the initial demographics and trends report that we shared with you all, that people locally are spending higher-than-average amounts of money annually on baseball. The other things that were high up there were hunting and I think shotgun shooting, which are things your recreation department's not going to provide. So if you're looking at it from a market perspective, um, and I, I do agree that there are certainly trends for sports such as lacrosse and soccer and rugby, but baseball isn't necessarily trending down either. And there is, um, data supporting that people are spending money locally on baseball equipment and services.
So do we have more kids playing soccer or baseball?
Baseball, softball. Baseball, softball is number one, soccer's number two.
Soccer's climbing the ladder.
Yes, it is. And that's, and that's the strength of, of the multipurpose fields. It truly is. Rachel, I'd like to add a pro that I think, one of the pros that should be added here is that it's...
To which side?
Either A or B.
Okay.
Because both of them, a pro is they're co-located, uh, across the street from Broward Park. And, and I think that's a pro. Regardless of what concept, A or B, they're both, they're both right across the street. So you got Broward Park on one side and then you have the, uh, the baseball fields right across the street.
And can you talk a little bit more about why that's a pro?
Well, you've got teams that's, that's over in Broward Park. And they'd be able to cross and come over into municipal park as well.
Okay.
Correct, Maxie? Correct? They'll be able to use, the, the teams over in Broward Park will be able to come over and use the, the fields in municipal park.
Yes and no, it just depends on what age group. We've got different fields for different age groups.
Right. But it's an opportunity.
Yes.
Are you saying you would relocate those to, um, municipal park or that it would be good overflow or?
It would be good overflow.
Good overflow.
Yeah, and would it be an excellent partnership because of the co, uh, co-location?
Proximity to other ball fields.
Yep.
Okay.
You're centrally localized. That's the strength of it.
Yep.
Especially when you talk about, um, you know, the community park and the community, uh, concept.
Okay. Any other pros anyone would like me to add to A or B?
I think the parking at the golf course and the entrance and exit is a big pro for there.
Um, for the golf course?
Yeah, the baseball, concept A or B.
Okay.
With the wagon wheel.
Yep, yep, and we're...
That's a big pro for there.
Primarily doing municipal park, but I will, we can, we can make one that reflects that for municipal park.
Didn't mean to jump ahead on you.
Nope, you're fine.
One thing that I'd like to comment on is the fact that with the open field, um, that we see in concept A, when we do the things at the events we help, we host up here, this would give us a place for the events to be and open up, free up some more parking. But I also think that when we get our public safety building, uh, up here also, that you're looking at what's going to happen with this park is that we probably want to, if anything, I don't want to say decrease, but have it so that it would be more community-oriented. So you could come up here and you could walk or you could play tennis, you could do whatever. But right now, if we put these baseball fields here, take away the parking that we currently have, then what's going to happen is, uh, events that we host, uh, and also if you put that public safety building there too, the amount of space they're going to need. I'm just concerned that you're going to have a lot in this small area, which is going to be small because of the amount of, uh, space it takes with the baseball fields. Plus, the, the other concern I have is just the, the loss of parking that we just recently paid for. You know, that's, that funding that we just, that's just my concern. My concern, the reason I like, like concept A is I think it opens up this park with, um, more opportunities for community and for our citizens. And it also gives us the, the sense of, you know, whatever's taking place on a soccer field, lacrosse or whatever on those fields, you can also have that grandstand kind of thing and you could have some kind of open, uh, concert or special event there and it would be all up here together, so. So I personally like concept A better than B for the municipal park.
Do the commissioners in general have a vision for either locating most of the town events in municipal park or the golf course park or relocating all of them to golf course park? Is there consensus on a vision for that?
I think as soon as we move forward with golf course property, we can, we can come back here and, as you said before, we don't have to move lights or anything, uh, to put soccer fields out here, lacrosse fields out here. We're going to have to have new lights, no matter what we build at the golf course. So that is a plus because we don't have to pay the expense of changing all those lights around or pulling them out. So I would like to see us move forward with, with, uh, either A or B at the, at the golf course. So we'll have to buy lights anyway for that, so.
Rachel, we have four multipurpose, you've proposed four multipurpose fields on the golf course. That's, that's the direction. At least, it is in my opinion.
And is everyone comfortable losing two town-owned and operated baseball fields?
No, I'm not.
I don't want to lose anything.
But you will because you'll lose the ones that are here.
I don't want to lose anything, but I'm also looking at how inclusive we're going to be going forward in the future. That's, that's what, that's what this proposed plan is to me.
Right. Well, and just one other question, because having visited some parks when we were on a committee, um, previous board, it is, is also possible that those baseball fields can, up at the golf course can be multipurpose. I know I've visited one, uh, recreation park and what they had done is had it so you could convert them. You know, you'd play baseball, you could play softball, or you could turn the field around and you played football on that field. Uh, and I know that that was something that they had done so that you could get multipurpose use. Uh, and that was in Holly Springs.
Mhm.
Uh, so, and there's also another one that I looked at down at North Myrtle Beach, uh, park, that they've got a plan very similar where one field can convert to several fields just by the placement of the temporary fencing or whatever. So I don't know if that's a thought too, uh, so that we don't have to completely destroy up here.
Um, we looked at that on the multi-use fields, that you can cut them in half and turn them and use them for youth play because they're tournament size right now. I think they're bigger than the fields that, Maxie, you had already originally listed. Now, the, to get, we could maybe get one multi-use field between two of the large baseballs. So you could take out this walkway here and possibly get a multi-use field on here. But this concept you already have, um, you're better off doing that here. So you can get a multi-use field here, here, because on that one you already get four.
You did that, what, three hundred and, like...
Three hundred.
Sixty feet?
Yep.
Uh, something like that for multi-use?
I actually brought the scale and trash paper. So, yeah, you could get, I mean, you could get multi-use fields on here too. That's three sixty. So we just have to take, um, pedestrian circulation around the outside of the center. But that's a possibility to combine those and that would be on concept A. And that could potentially give you two or three more.
So when baseball season's not in, they could be used for something else.
Mhm, mhm.
Mayor?
Uh-huh.
I think we have like six ball fields back here now, two across the street. There's two at our disposal at Baldwin Elementary School and one at Hook Mills Middle School. What's that, eleven? And we keep most of those fields busy all the time. Matter of fact, Parks and Rec staff's having to schedule around different events to get them all in. So for us to lose two ball fields, that's a, that's a big loss.
Did we have consensus on where you'd like to see events located?
Where would you?
Anyone got thoughts on that?
I think events are, best, it's always been out here. But it doesn't, if we move events over there, it's fine with me too.
We're doing all this just to gain wagon wheel back here. If we did nothing, we still have six ball fields back here.
And they're all used.
Yes.
Not as, these fields here are larger than what we've got.
Yeah, there'd be tournament fields. This would be a tournament field instead of a regular ball field.
I think this, I think Maxie probably had this design a while back for us, uh, in draft form somewhat. And we're losing two ball fields because we're going to wagon wheel with larger fields.
Yeah, because you're putting in three, three three hundreds. That's why.
Right.
That, that, and that's what's, and that's what's consuming. That's what's taking two of them, Maxie, is those, those three three hundreds. These are big fields.
Which is, uh, we used to call it pony league, but it was, is it major?
I know, I've played on them, so, I mean, it's a lot of space.
You've got three hundred-foot fields, you can play anything from tee ball, approved fifteen, seventeen.
Complete.
Well, you just bring your fence up.
Softball.
Yeah.
Um, you have bases at sixty foot, seventy foot, eighty foot, ninety foot, temporary fence. You have bases at sixty foot, seventy foot, eighty foot, ninety foot, temporary fences. You can make them two hundred foot fields, you can leave them three hundred foot fields.
But what's the three hundred feet, what's the three hundred feet typically for? Is that for the majors?
I think Yankee Stadium looks like three thirty to the right field.
I mean, our, our majors, I'm talking about Dixie Youth.
Our, our twelve U is anywhere from two hundred to two twenty-five to be able to host a tournament. Eight U, ten U users that face up to two hundred foot. You step up to thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, seventeen, three hundred, three thirty. So three sixty, that would give you the ability to play Swamp Dogs. Yankee, bring the New York Yankees up to play them three hundred.
Yeah, back in the day when I played at Toque, we played on Reed Ross's baseball field. The fourteen, fifteen year old, thirteen through fifteen.
Are you telling us that's when you rolled a sock up and used it for baseball?
You know it. We had a boy that could slap it over them trees at that age.
Rachel-
So is the consensus, she's asking if the consensus is where would you want to put the public activities?
The events.
The events, the public events that we host. Like the food truck event coming up April fourth, where would that move to? Would that stay here? And so if we're going to, if we're, if we're looking at planning ahead, you got to start thinking about the things we host here.
What events, what events are you talking about, Rachel? That was my question.
Food truck, rodeo, any of the ones that we've been to. We went to, oh, there was a great one for, that they had people parachute, we went to, like-
Oh, that was the police.
Yeah, that was Old Mills Day.
National Night Out.
Yeah, National Night Out was that one, yeah.
National Night Out, you got Old Mill Day, you got Fourth of July, all the-
Christmas and the Christmas event we held up here.
Parade culminates with, and a minute here.
Well, now, some of these are smaller than, than others. I mean, the food truck rodeo, what is that? April to October, maybe? And that's not, that's not, that's not year round.
I don't see that being a problem, still having it here, the food truck rodeo.
I mean, that's, that's not going to take a lot of space. That's the reason I asked you, what type of events are, are you talking about?
Any of the existing and any you might want in the future. So if you want to have a movie in the park or anything that's really going to need a lot of parking, the- Just something to consider, if you move towards this, there's no event space here. So you're relocating all of your events out to golf course park.
And that's where I'm at. That's just me.
Not attaching good and bad to that.
That's where I'm at.
I just want to be very clear with everyone that this concept will relocate all of your events where any type of parking or large crowds will go out to golf course park.
Yep.
And this concept, because we're adding two hundred and seventy-four spaces, this space would be intended for expanded events.
Well, Rachel, you know how I feel about multipurpose spaces?
Go ahead, Mayor.
And that's, I'm, I'm with the golf course because I think that's the future. I do.
Okay.
And I could see a stage up there with a nice bluegrass band playing and I just have that vision.
Okay, Commissioner Larson?
So last time, we had our last meeting here after the meeting you and I spoke, because I didn't really understand where the concept of the wagon wheel came through because public did not want that. And this was a staff recommendation for the wagon wheel. Is that not correct?
Uh, that is true. I did go back and look at our community engagement results a second time and I've got a little bit more information on that. But go ahead with your question.
Yeah, because I pulled up my, I had pictures of all the boards and stuff that you did at the park and stuff. So I kind of went back and looked at those again too. And I kind of know where Proton Mitchell was going with that as far as the municipal park, if we left it the way it is and just refurbished it basically. And, and I have to say, I like concept B better on both. If we're, if we're going to have to, if we're sticking with a wagon wheel, which I don't particularly support the wagon wheel myself. I, I support the baseball, but maybe upgrading the fields that we already have pre-existing and, and making better use of what we already have in place and making them look nicer and more usable. But, um, also, I didn't know we were doing a public works expansion, that that was being factored into a Parks and Rec master plan. Is, is that something that-
It's not that we're doing one.
Yeah.
Okay.
If, if public works were to expand, that's the only area they can expand in.
Okay, okay.
So we don't want to put something there that's going to possibly hinder that in the future.
Okay.
That's what that is.
Um, so I have to say, I like concept B better on both. But I, I kind of was seeing where Proton was going with the municipal park and not losing the baseball fields, but more or less trying to make them a more workable situation for baseball.
So we still have a couple more slides before we decide one way or the other. Did anyone else have input on moving events?
Well, if we go with concept B at the golf course, I'd assume we'd need to be mostly completed. And then we transition this area back here on concept B.
Um-
Because of timing and baseball season and all that kind of thing.
Yeah, so one of the challenges with the municipal park concept B is that in order to construct this, you would have to be municipal park fields would be out of play for an entire season.
I mean, we're going to have to have public facilities. Like Old Mill Days, we have the Mill Workers' Reunion. We had it here last time, or we have it at the rec center, but we have to have some kind of facility. It's nice to have it all together for like Old Mill Days because a lot of folks migrate over for the Mill Workers' Reunion, then they go back out and enjoy the rest of the event for Old Mill Days. So I think, you know, of course, we're, I'm sure we're being challenged for funds and all that, so. Maybe we're sitting here talking about a bond referendum, do the whole shooting match and let the voters decide. Then I guess we could just take off and make it all happen within twelve months. But, uh, after a bond referendum would go through, if it went through. Otherwise, and we still got staffing concerns, overhead concerns, to be able to manage all the, all this property that we're talking about. We got land, that's great. We're land poor. But I don't know that we got the money in our operating budget to expand our facilities without significant user fees or some other revenue sources coming in. This is my opinion on it.
Mayor, Mayor, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
The revenue funds are there. If we build the wagon wheel, the revenue funds are there. Cumberland County Parks and Recreation, along with Fayetteville, collects over between six and eight million dollars a year on gas and hotel, food. Plus, they get a hundred dollars a team that enters any tournament. And we're always talking about the money that we have to supplement to Parks and Rec because we didn't give them enough money in the budget and we keep adding additional stuff to them. Twenty thousand, thirty thousand here and there. The revenue is there. We put a ten dollar an hour guy out there to watch over the place during the weekend, pick up paper and so forth and so on. So if it requires a motion, I'd be willing to make a motion that we do the golf course.
I don't know that we need anything quite yet. I still have a little bit more to present and discuss. And Ms. Larson, just going back to your, a couple of your comments. I mean, I'd be happy to share this. We did, so the MPI is a little bit of evidence for at least maintaining the current level of baseball here. I think the participation rates and also the legacy of baseball in Hope Mills is something to consider. We got MPI. And then if we go with B, just making sure everyone's still, and the, we, we might want to ask the public, I know they didn't, perception wise, want additional fields necessarily, but I'd be curious what perception would be about losing baseball fields.
And the public will have to weigh in on this too. I mean, there's still, still got to be another input from public.
So did anyone else besides Mr. Bellflowers have any input on the events?
I have one. Um, all the events we've had before, of course, have been over here, but a lot of them are smaller and it's more family oriented than a, a big area right now. I think the food trucks and, um, the Christmas parade and the Fourth of July parade, I mean, they also have a center here. And I'd like to see a lot of that remain here. But I also like both the concepts, concept A for the municipal park and concept A for the Hope Mills recreational complex. And the reason I say that is because we have very qualified staff and yourself, Ms. Cotter. And you've come up with, you've spent a lot of time on this and you've measured every little inch, trying to get everything in here. I don't know about the others, but I'm not an expert on all this that you're talking about. So I have a lot of faith in our staff and what you've come up with, so I'd like to go with concept A on both.
All right, so are we ready to move to the next slide? Okay, so these cons of each, quickly, and we've probably talked about a lot of them. For municipal park A, the cons are fewer multi-use fields proposed than golf course park. Storm ponds will need renovation. And then for concept B, there's no opportunity for inclusive, that should be play, not plan. We're removing some of the natural tree area and we would need to completely reconfigure and reconstruct the trail. All the event space would get moved to golf course park primarily because of parking limitations. And I know some of your events are smaller. But if we are going to put a wagon wheel here, this will consume all of your space and all of your parking. Your storm water management ponds would need to be completely reconstructed. The public works expansion, if you want to talk about that, that as part of this, would be a little bit more limited. Or the tennis courts would be removed and relocated to the golf course park, which we are showing. The increased cost of initial construction. So this is about the sequencing again and what funds you might have available in the short term versus long term. And the, well, we've got some costs to share with you in just a moment, but the construction costs to, we're, we're basically leveling municipal park if we're going to do concept B. And so the initial construction cost would be significantly more than just the renovations to park A. You do lose two of the town-owned baseball fields. And then we talked a little bit about how one season, all of the fields at municipal park, baseball-wise, would be out of commission. And then keep in mind too that the splash pad or depending on how you want to phase stuff and availability of funds, but some of the most needed elements were the splash pad and the inclusive play. And that could potentially be delayed until you have the funds to construct the build-out for the golf course park and the aquatic center. So finally, does anyone have cons for either to add?
I got just one comment.
Yep.
Rachel, now, these cons apply if a wagon wheel concept is put there.
Correct.
Only if. If the wagon wheel concept was not put there and the soccer fields or multipurpose fields were at the golf course, what proposed renovations could be put there to enhance the ballpark?
Um, well-
Without a wagon wheel?
Right, so you probably still don't have the ability to do tournaments. That's what you're limiting.
See, I, I really would like to see a pro-con presentation without the wagon wheel concept.
Okay.
But that's just me, Mayor. This is my opinion.
Okay.
I don't know, we're comparing apples with apples here. These multi-use fields on concept B at the golf course are much larger than the multi-use fields that remain in concept A here at the municipal park.
Maxie, you want to tell them about the, how we use the multipurpose at municipal park?
Fields one and two, I don't know if we're looking at those as just two fields. The area is big and like modified fields. We do, most of our soccer's six U, eight U, ten U, twelve U. So we could fit multiple fields on one and two. Not only that, but fields five and six, the way it's already currently designed, that is soccer and football during the fall as well. So I'm not quite sure of the dimensions of the multipurpose fields on the concept B. But I, I think that might be one thing to kind of get lost is that between's field one and two up here and then the back fields as well, which is the way it's already set up. Again, without knowing the dimensions, I'm thinking we're going to have equal multipurpose field out here if, if we repurpose these fields up here.
So those are the dimensions you gave us for, was it twelve?
I'm not sure.
Actually, I got my cutouts right here of all my dimensions.
So the four, the four multipurpose fields you have on concept B at the golf course, are they hundred forty yards? What's the dimensions on that?
Those, I think, are the two thirty by three sixty and these. So these are the two thirty-five by three sixty. And these guys are three hundred by two-ten. We do have a little bit of room if we wanted to make those the bigger ones. I just made these bigger to see what we could fit. If this was truly going to be a multi-use athletic complex. And I guess, yeah, going back to if we did nothing here, there are some renovations we could do to the fields. The orientation is still the most challenging thing. And I think you would see your participation rates in general increase with any renovations to the fields and increased playability. So. Anyone want to add any other cons? To either? All right, the costs are the last piece of this. So I did lows and highs. Master plan level cost estimates are very, very high level. These are subject to many, many changes and iterations as you dive into more details. For example, the difference in cost for a trail between six feet and ten feet wide could be, you know, up to a hundred dollars a linear foot. So depending on how we actually design, if you want to add under drains to your fields, that could add two hundred thousand dollars a field. So all that to say, this is a very, very high level cost estimate. I like to do ranges so you know what a low and a high. These are also for kind of creme de la creme facilities in terms of splash pads, all-inclusive play. These are true costs from other projects that we've worked on and constructed, but-
There's a type of one there that should say municipal A golf course.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
We caught that earlier.
Are you talking sixty to sixty-five million dollars?
Yeah, I had a little stick shot.
Now, keep in mind, the golf, both of the golf course parks include an aquatic center and an indoor recreation center, which is a significant cost. If there are any other questions, I've got some itemized costs with me.
I think if I get more realistic and look at some sustainability, what we can really afford here at Hope Mills and, uh, scale back quite a bit, but, uh-
This also does include, um-
Quite a reach.
Your consultant's design, which is typically ten to twelve percent, and that's to develop- construction drawings and take you through permitting. It also includes the contractors bonding and insurance, twenty percent contingency, which is a lot, I think um, hmm, and then ten percent, so your, your twenty percent contingency is, for example, on municipal park A, six hundred and seventy thousand to eight hundred thousand, just in contingency. But at the master plan level, we do recommend a twenty percent contingency. This also does not include escalation, and escalation right now is about four percent per year. So, depending on when you actually, you actually complete your construction, your costs could go up from here.
How much did you budget for the aquatic center and the multi-use facility?
Aquatics center, I budgeted twenty-six to twenty-eight million.
That includes the multi-use part of it as well?
Yes.
Rachel, how much did you budget for wagon wheel construction?
New baseball fields are about two hundred and fifty thousand a pop. So, for four, it's a million dollars, and that does not include lights or irrigation. If you want to include irrigation, you're looking at another eighty thousand. And your lights are three million.
Does that include the, the center house? That doesn't include the center building, does it?
Nope.
It's just the fields.
That's just the fields, irrigation and lighting. And um, for your amphitheater, if you want the amphitheater with restrooms and concessions, we have on the low end, the two hundred and fifty thousand and high end, three twenty-five thousand.
Three and a half million.
No, no, no. Three hundred twenty-five thousand.
No, total.
Oh, total.
About three and a half million?
Uh, well, three, no, four, four million.
Four, okay.
About four and a half.
Four and a half?
Yes.
For a wagon wheel?
Uh, for the creme de la creme, yes.
Okay. Gosh, e- e- even comes with fireworks?
Those you have to pay for yourself. Those are not included in the cost estimate.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mm-hmm.
Four and a half.
Um, so, one thing to consider in terms of more immediate improvements, wherever they are, is what you could bite small chunks off of to make the greatest impact across the community. Those are going to be things like your trails, your splash, splash pad, your all-inclusive play, um, easy fixes, converting some of your fields rather than constructing new, more picnic shelters for uh, event space rather than a full amphitheater. So, these amphitheater numbers also include things like lighting and sound and stage. So, any of this you can do cheaper. You can value engineer it all day long. These are some of the higher-end costs that we've been seeing lately.
Any other questions, concerns? Any other requests for information? Now, I saw you're making a presentation about the Part of Grant at the, at our meeting. So, you're going to do that then instead of now?
Um, yeah, well, the thought was we wouldn't have time now. So, if we have, that has not changed the actual scope of what we'd like to see as part of the Part of Grant. And it's, it's one of, it's in your packet. And it's just the shaded area on the western side of the golf course park that would include a driveway access down to creek access with parking. And then ADA parking in a picnic shelter about halfway down with a sensory garden and sensory walk. I don't, you won't need a, I doubt you'll need a pond at this point to treat storm water. So, that's the only thing kind of shown that might not be included. Yep.
And just a question, I guess this will be for Ms. Adams, as far as the plans to get a permit now for a driveway.
Got an update during my manager's report.
But I mean, would that interfere having the request for the driveway down there? Because I know what they were looking at was for a driveway to be up closer to the building that we have. And this driveway is on down, so if the grant would pay for it.
I actually think they said, wasn't this where they said that they couldn't have one, Jesse, was down there, DOT? They said that they weren't going to permit it because of this, the, where the slope of the road and the- Yeah. That, that they weren't going to allow that third-
That one's out, Rachel.
Yeah. Unless, now, I'm not sure, were you able to-
I have reached out to one of our partner traffic engineering consultants, and they were at a meeting last week with DOT and hoping to speak with a district engineer who was not there unexpectedly. So, we have a meeting this week to talk about that, road widenings. It sounded out outside of what we typically hear in terms of forcing the town to make off-site road improvements for the extent of the road frontage just for this kind of phase-one piece, that you are not increasing the trips per day from its original use as a golf course. So, that sounded a little odd to me, and I would like the opportunity to have the conversation with a transportation engineer and the district engineer and report back to staff.
Madam Mayor, I have a que- we're talking about Part of Grants, right?
Yes, sir.
Is that where we are now?
Yes, and she's got the part, she's got the-
Yeah, I have a question.
She's got the picture of it for you there.
And it's, it's a que- it's a question, Rachel, of clarity.
Sure.
So, just want to make sure.
Yep.
After the lake park, the next priority was Heritage Park.
Mm-hmm.
Why would we not use the Part of Grant on Heritage Park?
Um, because we were asked to provide a Part of Grant application for this project, and so, we scoped this project to include all of the Part of application documentation, which we've done for this site and we have not done for Heritage Park. So, if you want to apply for a Part of Grant for Heritage Park, we would either need to update the scope of our contract or the town would in-house need to provide the services to meet the scope of the Part of Grant application.
Would Heritage Park require its own master plan?
Yes.
Feasibility study, pretty much like the golf course?
Yes, sir.
It, so that would, it would be required to do that?
Yes, sir.
And who, and who told you that the Part of Grant was going to be applied to the golf course? Was that the board?
That was what, my understanding of what the board asked staff to do, and then staff in turn asked us to prepare a scope of services for, the, this was, this was ages ago at this point. I think it was even fall two thousand, two thousand seventeen, because we were originally going to try to do last spring.
Right.
And we all decided you need a comprehensive plan to apply. And so, then we went through that process and we said we're going to apply this year. So, that was quite some time ago.
Previous board.
Well, yeah, but what's, what's been unclear, I guess, Rachel, is that I don't, at least I didn't know, that the Heritage Park required its own master plan, because it's, it was in the next priority. After the lake park, the next priority was Heritage Park. I don't think that's changed.
Well, and I, we, originally, a Part of Grant was attempted for the lake.
Right.
And that was our goal, was to use the grant for the lake.
Right.
And then, um, we have a plan that was drawn up that we could use for that application once we had a comprehensive plan. When this board refocused and moved more to the golf course, now that we had to have the golf course involved, the Rivers, Withers and Ravenel plan was bumped back. And you changed phase-two of that plan. That phase-two was what we were going to use to apply for the Part of Grant once we got the comprehensive plan complete. So, that's the change that has happened over time. The original focus was on phase-one, two and three down at the lake, but we, we weren't success, successful when Ms. Adams submitted it because of not needing comprehensive plan.
Right, and I, I think if you remember the last meeting that Rachel was here, she indicated that she checked with the Part of representatives for the lake. Did you not? And it would not meet the requirements.
They just didn't think you had a competitive application because the majority of the improvements were infrastructure-based, more so than recreation-based.
Where I'm going with this, Mayor, is that if we were, if we were to ever develop Heritage Park and want to use, and want to apply for a Part of Grant, we would have to have a master plan completed prior to both events.
Yes, and it's good practice.
That, that's where I really wanted to go here, because I don't think that was ever, at least it wasn't to me, since I've been on this board. It was, it was really never clear that Heritage Park would need its own master plan, just like the golf course, underneath the umbrella of the comp plan that we're working on now that we didn't know about a year ago.
Having a master plan for all of your parks is not only best practice, but if you do want funding, and they don't all need to be to the extent of the golf course park, but there are certain requirements as part of the Part of Application checklist, dedicated community input meetings, dedicated cost estimates. You can't do a cost estimate without a master plan.
And you're right, because I mean, you know, the checklist on the Part of Grant, it completely fits the, the golf course.
Yep.
Because all of the elements have been done to include now the conception.
The environmental review is a big one, because they're using state funds, ADA. They will look for ADA compliance.
Okay, so, that's why I just wanted the clarity, Mayor, is that if we go forward with Heritage Park, we, this board knows what that's going to require.
And there was a phase-three drawn that gave us the, the plan for Heritage Park that we had just needed to be engineered, is that my understanding? Then we have phase-one, two and three with Withers and Ravenel that showed a plan that would, I mean, just like when we did the, when we engineered the change from the boardwalk to the retaining wall, we have the plan, we just don't have the-
At the lake, not, not at Heritage Park.
But Heritage Park was in phase-three.
I don't think, yeah, I don't think there was a-
No, we didn't discuss it.
Disgusted, okay. Well, phase-three was, but phase-three would be Heritage Park, okay?
And, and I'm not sure, Rachel, you, I think you've seen, because I think I've shared some of Heritage Park with you, but unless, because the plan is for that to mainly be rough-cut trails and some educational signage, some storyboards, um, maybe a picnic, um, you know, a few picnic tables, a kayak launch, that kind of thing, maybe a little bit along the, the water, a little bit of a trail along the water. But if Part of is looking for ADA accessibility, is Heritage Park really going to hit all those? What, what are our vision for Heritage Park, or would that need to change somewhat for that to be Part of applicable?
That's a good question. I think having a conversation with Part of, again, there's a point with ADA at which if providing accessibility compromises the original intent of the recreational element, which is much easier to argue for something like rock climbing than it is for trails. Because it's, it's not challenge, it's not as challenging to provide ADA accessible trails, and it's usually the right thing to do. If you can argue that the experience is really, and it's not a matter of cost, cost doesn't typically count as a hardship. Terrain would count as a hardship, whether it's rock or steep topography. And I don't know what the topography is out there. I would say something like your kayak launch wouldn't, but you still need to provide, and this is the quirky part about ADA, um, accessibility up to the point of the recreational element if it is not going to be accessible. So, you'd still need to provide handicap parking.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, well, Rachel, and I'm looking right at the conceptual picture from January two thousand thirteen of the, of the only conceptual plan that I know of for Heritage Park, and it included walking trails and amphitheater, picnic areas, observation decks, piers, canoe rentals, fishing piers, shelters, and several bridges, all in one little area. And that was, and like I said, this was the next priority after the lake park. So, I guess that's why I asked it, the clarity piece, is that even though that's a nice conceptual drawing and conceptual plan from, well, six years ago now, it's still-
And that's something you could use.
It still will require a master plan to meet the Part of-
Um, probably just a quick update to that. So, you'll want to make sure, what they want to see is that the needs and recommendations of your comprehensive plan are supported in each park master plan. So, trails were a really big need across your community. Sounds like that's heavy trail focused.
Yes.
So, it does. What, you basically want to go back and take a look at that, that concept plan, call it concept plan, master plan, that is the type of drawing you need. Make sure it supports all the needs and wants of your community per the recent comprehensive plan. If it does, you're good to go. If it doesn't, you might want to make some small modifications. Then you'll need to prepare the documents, so your written justification, your environmental statement, um, a couple other things, your existing conditions evaluation that are all in the Part of Grant checklist.
Right.
You'll want to do a cost estimate. Do we know what the improvements for that would even be? Has anyone done a cost estimate?
Oh, no. Now, since you're doing the, the, the master comprehensive Parks and Rec Plan, you will be addressing this area in, in the big plan, correct?
From a big-picture perspective, in terms of one of the priorities is to implement the improvements recommended from that two thousand thirteen plan. We might say update your master plan, but I can't provide you a cost until that plan is updated. And it is best practice, and we recommend in a comp plan that there is a master plan for every park site that you have prior to applying for any grant funding or commissioning construction drawings.
Well, and it's key, I agree with you, Rachel, because there's a lot of focus and a lot of energy being applied to the golf course. I just don't want us to lose sight of this park. I, that, I just want to keep that on the front burner and not watch it fall off the table.
Yep. That's why the short-term, mid-term, long-term priorities in the master plan, the comprehensive plan help staff focus on what those projects should be. Um, I think it sounds like since two thousand and thirteen that there have been a lot of directions that staff have been asked to take. And so, having some clarity around what are our priorities with all of these different projects, because you only have so much money to invest every single year. And if we knew what that costs, that could be the money you have for the next five years. Golf course park might be the money you have on a ten-year plan, so-
Yeah, I do have a cost.
Oh, you do?
Yeah, Drew, and Drew CIP.
CIP.
Seventy-five thousand's what the cost is.
That sounds very, very low.
Yeah.
That sounds-
Now, that's not all the bridges and piers, that's just the trail. Pretty much the trail on-
Just the trail on-
Rough-cut trail.
Rough-cut, yeah, gator cut, yeah. But it is, but it is included in our CIP.
That is great. That is excellent, very good.
Okay, Mayor, that's it for me.
Okay. Okay, well, is there anything else for the good of the cause? Are you, will you present this during our regular meeting, because it's time for the regular meeting to start?
I can, we're primarily looking for a, um-
What's, what do we do next?
Next, we will have the Park and Recreation Advisory Board and the Public Input Meeting, during which will be a, a prep, prep- during which we'll be, uh, presenting the recommendations of the comprehensive plan and the four total concepts here for the public to provide input on.
Okay.
That will all happen before we will ask you for, um, you know, a, a final decision on Concept A or Concept B. What we do need or are hoping for tonight is a thumbs up that this is the Part of Grant application you would like us to apply for. Because it's due in May first, drafts are due April first. And we're very limited on time to pull all the documentation together.
Is that going to change the nature of our DOT arrangements, Commissioner Larson?
That, that would be one of the concerns was that once they started doing any, um, changes to the golf courts, that that would trigger the turning in, the left and right turning lane. So, I mean, obviously that would not be something that the town would want to incur right now with the other projects ahead.
Yeah, and that, that's the piece that sounds fishy to me because you're not going to be increasing your trips per day from the original golf course. So our recommendation would be to apply for the Part of and the temporary driveway permit. If, and there's always the chance that you are not awarded the Part of Grant funding, you use the CIP funding, the matching funds that Drew has set aside to construct a portion of this or the, the, um, trail that you all have been wanting to construct. You'll know by April, the construction on that could get started next fall.
But, Rachel, what are the cost estimates?
Um, so we did a very similar project to this and it would be around eight hundred and nine hundred thousand for these improvements.
That's total, nine hundred thousand?
Yep, that's total. So Part of right now is not, um, awarding full five hundred thousand dollar grants. They're just not, it's so competitive. But I think you could ask for three fifty.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
So you'd have to come up with matching funds and anything this would cost above and beyond that.
Thank you.
Could this not be used for the picnic shelter and the swings and things like that at the lake park that we are in the process of getting ready to do?
Um, I did speak with the Part of Representative about that and their, um, recommendation was it would not be a strong application because the cost of those amenities versus the cost of the, um, improvements, the infrastructure improvements, that's such a small percentage. Unless, are you saying you wouldn't ask for money for the bulkhead? You're just asking.
Yeah, your body said, but then are they taking into consideration that we put a two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar pier?
No, that won't count for your matching funds.
I mean, it's not that the town hasn't put in a substantial amount of money. I mean, they have put in that.
They do.
And they're going to do a lot of upgrades in the, as far as maintenance-wise for the sprinkler system and landscaping and
Right, and those would not count as matching funds for the application?
No, no, but I mean, when you're saying about the percentage versus the percentage, I mean, they have done two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar piers. So I mean, they're, as far as improving.
Sure, I think they're referring to infrastructure versus recreation improvements and what that ratio is. Unless you're, you want to apply for just the recreation elements, which is a possibility. Um, the reason that this piece sounded attractive to Part of is because they're very interested right now in facilities that are all-inclusive, facilities that provide amenities to veterans or special populations and anything with water access.
Well, it's going to have the kayak launch. It's going to have the water accessibility into the swimming area that's going to be done from the bulkhead, the picnic shelter and, um, and the swings.
Bunches.
You know, the, yeah, bunches of swings.
I think what she said is that she's asked and they say that the best chances are this one that she's drawn in up here. That she's asked Part of what would be the best thing to apply for. And what they've stated is this would get the most likelihood of winning the grant.
Correct.
This, this
But it's not a guarantee.
No, this proposal has the highest visibility because of its greenway and the blue way that's combined. I know what the strength of it is.
And how, how soon would we be notified if we were to receive the grant?
In August.
In August.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve a Part of application area is presented by Ms. Carter.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the
Can we do it contingent on whether DOT says it's going to trigger the turning lanes?
I'll make that for an amendment.
I, I would agree with that simply because you're not going to be able to afford the road front improvements.
Yeah, I know.
Right.
Well, the, if the temporary driveway that we're already going to get a permit for, I don't see the relocation of it to the other spot because my understanding was because it's considered, um, temporary, a temporary cut.
Mm-hmm.
I asked the same question because the thought was that the fairway drive, where there could possibly be a, a signal light would be where again, we would have to have turn light, turn lanes there.
Yep.
But you're off, you're off away from that signal light on either side of this.
So I would say our Part of Grant application would be for a ten, the decision you make tonight would be contingent upon the, um, a driveway permit only and no off-site road improvements and a driveway permit at the location that DOT approves. Um, it's just hard to have that conversation when we don't know what the phasing of this is yet. So if we know phase one is going to be the Part of Application, I can have that conversation with the district engineer.
I guess I'm in my motion to fit Ms. Carter's explanation in.
So the motion is that we, uh, accept, um, Ms. Carter's recommendation to apply for the Part of Grant for the entrance in this, this part.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Mayor Protem, I, I understand, I support the motion too. I just think it's premature until we know for sure what, what access that we're going to be given from DOT. I, I just have a strong reservation about that.
That's what she's going to do. Before, before she moves on, she's going to come back and tell you.
But I would like to have, I would like to know that prior to, prior to moving forward. I just, I think we're trying to put the cart before a horse because we don't know what access we're going to be granted, if any.
I think you've already been told you'll be granted an access.
Well,
And
that's been some discussion.
Yes. Okay, well
I'd like to see it permanent. I'd like to see exactly what, because it could change the whole footprint. Where, where it may change the way we approach it. I mean, I've been told, and so has Commissioner Larson, that the proposed entry that we have is a definitely a no-go. But what we don't know is what is a go. I just, I just think that we would all, I'd like to know before we move forward.
If you look at this, there's three areas up there. So if this is the one that my understanding was that was the issue, fairway. Okay, this one and this one were not an issue. It was the fairway, the one that goes across from fairway.
I think what we were told was fairway would trigger them having to, to do, us to do the light, the traffic light. The other one was too far down to on the
The one furthest to the, to the left, Mayor. Um, they, DOT, the one
But she could, could she not, could
This one down here.
From that driveway?
From which one?
The, the other driveway on the other
Far right, far right.
The one at the far east?
Far east.
Yeah. Um, that would change probably our recommendation for the application because you're not going to want to install, that is
Yeah, that's my point.
That's like
That's my point.
Twelve hundred, that's almost two thousand extra linear feet of road.
Rachel, would it be possible for you to have an answer by, by our next board meeting on March eighteenth?
March eighteenth?
Cause I'm still in the window.
Yes, I think if there is any way that we could correspond in advance with staff and send something digitally, um, March eighteenth, it's not that I can't have you an answer. It's that we have very limited time to prepare the Part of Grant application.
But I think we would know more between now and March eighteenth, exactly what we're looking at.
Sure, sure.
So we can make a, a more informed decision.
Mm-hmm, I understand. Um, if there's any way to get us an answer, if we get you the exact location of the driveway this week, if there's any way to get us a answer on moving forward, that would really help us
And, and we've got a retreat on Saturday, so that could be another opportunity.
Mm-hmm.
I would just like to ask that we wait. That's, that's just how I feel.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor.
Motion's on the floor.
Motion's on the floor.
He stipulated with his motion wants to get information from DOT.
Contingencies that Rachel mentioned, two contingencies.
All right. So all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed? So it's
Commissioner Legge voted with it?
Yes.
Okay, so it's three to two, so, um, carry on.
Okay, and I will still, um, provide staff with this information so we can make informed decisions about the driveway and the access before we start preparing the grant. And we'll let council know if it is not feasible to move forward with the application because of the response from DOT.
Okay.
So
All right, that sounds good.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you.
All right.
If we find out before the meeting Saturday, we'll let you know.
Yeah, we can let you know.
Okay, good.
Okay, just real quick, more than likely, um, if Rachel's available, we'll have this at the Parks and Rec Advisory Meeting on the twenty-fifth. That's their next regularly scheduled meeting. And we'll try to do the same thing as we did before. So Rachel doesn't have to make two trips. Every trip is a cost. Um, we'll do the advisory board first and then the public after that.
Public on the
And we'll see if the twenty-fifth works for that and let y'all know once that's firmed up.
Okay. All right, this time, do we have a motion to adjourn? Have a motion to adjourn this special meeting?